I'm in the military service, defending our country, providing us with freedom that we have today. We ask you for your blessings on the families. We ask you for the blessings of our continued blessings of our city as progress going forward. In your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Again, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Yeah, Captain O'Neal, every day really is a day of memories. Okay, uh, thank you everybody for being here. I appreciate having all these people out here this great day, great evening. Having you here, I love having our news media representative over here. Lovely lady, thank you ma'am. Okay. I remember one is Facebook questions about the agenda, and we had no Facebook questions about the agenda. So, that's good. Do we have any public comments tonight? Anybody? Do we just make any public comments? Okay, I don't see anybody. So, the first item here is adopted minutes. May 4th, 2021 regular council meeting minutes and May 18th, 2021 council work session minutes. I entertain a motion to accept them both as written unless invite Caesar D. for change, or you want to do them separately.
Mayor make a motion that we accept them both as written.
A second motion.
Have a motion in a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hear none, both of them passed. And I'm sorry if you got to say, but Councilman Wright sent his regrets he couldn't make it tonight. All right, old business, we have none. New business, the first item we want to have there is Dave Seer from Parish Construction. He's gonna come up here and talk to us about the 200th anniversary. Either way you want to do it. We appreciate you being here.
Well, Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. I promise to be very brief. As you know, I'm Dave Seer, CEO of Parish Construction Group. We've been in Houston County now for 26 years. And we're very blessed to work in the community. One of the neatest, I have about 125 team members now. And one of the neatest parts of my job as CEO is people don't hesitate to darken my door almost every day with ideas. Some of them good, some of them not so good. But a couple months back, one of my teammates came in and had a great idea, I thought. And unfortunately, he can't be here to take credit for it tonight, but he sends his regards to the very talented carpenter. And his idea was to help celebrate Houston County's 200th anniversary. He wanted to make little memento plaques shaped like Houston County with all the municipalities indicated. And it says, "Celebrating 200 years, 1821 to 2021." And on the back, "Congratulations, Houston County." And we wanted to share this with you and thank Mayor and Council for all you do to make not only Houston County a business-friendly community, but a great place to live and raise a family. And we thank you for your efforts and please accept this in the spirit it's given to celebrate the 200th anniversary. And, uh, see, this is where Bill would have been good. These plaques were actually made from a cherry tree. It's cherry, a cherry tree grown in Houston County.
Wow.
So, please accept these as our...
You know, Mr. Seer, what's something about this is what it came out in the 150th. Is that a big difference?
Well, I hope you all keep reading on your desk with pride.
Thank you so much, sir.
I'll leave one for Mr. Wright and I've got one for Chief Kunkin and Chief Jones also.
Bill, this is the one from, uh, 150 years ago. Actually have a little coffee cup thing here. I just happened to find one one day, so I kept it. So, I just think it's a neat thing, but I love this. I mean, this is something that's gonna be historical for a long time. 100 years from now, somebody have this up there showing it to everybody. Thank you so much for what you do, sir, and what you do in our community. I know you built a number of things for us too. We appreciate it.
We built the law enforcement center. I hope it's holding up well.
It is.
And we appreciate, you know, we work all over the state of Georgia, but it's a blessing when we can work at home, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you again so much.
Appreciate y'all.
Okay, that was an exciting way to start off a meeting, wasn't it? I'll tell you. All right, item number four here is a presentation of the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget and public hearing. And we'll see if Captain Harrison handled that one for me.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, uh, as you all know, it's that time again where we do our budget presentation and also we have the public hearing tonight. This is for fiscal year 2022, which will be from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. On our budget committee this year was Councilman Justin Wright and Councilman Edward O'Neal. And I appreciate you both serving. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of meetings. I definitely appreciate you both serving on that committee. Okay, uh, first we'll just kind of start with our fund structure of the city. This year, we are going to add one fund, which will be our chip grant fund. But I'll just kind of go over the funds the city has. We have the governmental funds, which includes general fund, which is our chief operating, a chief operating fund. And basically, everything that is not required to be in a different fund would be under the general fund. Our special revenue funds include our confiscated assets, our Center Park Special Revenue Fund, and our chip grant fund, which will be a new special revenue fund this year because we were awarded the $400,000 in that chip grant. Under our capital project funds, we have the LME, which is our local maintenance improvement grant fund and our SLOSS 18 fund. Uh, under proprietary funds, we just have enterprise, which includes water and sewer, sanitation, and stormwater utility fund. Our fiduciary fund is the municipal court, which is the custodial fund that used to be the agency fund, but as the 84 kind of gave us the new terminology, which is now custodial. In the proposed budget, the city has budgeted for 71 full-time positions, 16 part-time positions, and five members of the governing authority. Of the 71 full-time and 16 part-time positions, 52 and a half full-time and 15 part-time are in the general fund, and 18 and a half full-time and one part-time are in the enterprise funds. And that just kind of gives us a summary of the full-time, part-time, and governing authority in each department there and in each fund. The proposed budget revenues were forecasted using the current milage rate of 11.944. That proposed milage rate would be unchanged from fiscal year 2021. And it is still less than what the milage rate was in 2010, which is 12.001. Just to kind of point that out, we're still operating at with a milage rate that is less than what we were in 2010. Here we'll look at our general fund revenues and our forecasted general fund revenues is $4,391,167. Of that amount, $2,416,590 or 55% is property taxes. $276,990 or 6% is motor vehicle entitled title life and warrant tax. $16,327 or 1% is mobile home tax. $51,252 or 1% is intangible recording tax. Real estate transfer tax is $15,532, which is less than 1%. Our franchise tax forecast is $479,795 or 11% of general fund revenues. Alcohol taxes is $79,952 or 2%. Insurance premium taxes, $596,652 or 14%. Penalties, interest, and fees forecasted is $4,500 or less than 1%. Our licenses and permits, $164,374 or 4%. Fidings and forfeitures, $275,000 or 6%. And miscellaneous is $14,205 or less than 1%. Our forecasted revenues other than the general fund is $5151,593. Of that amount, other governmental fund revenues total $1,096,700 or 21.21%. Enterprise fund revenues total $454,893 or 78.79%. Of the $1,096,700 of other governmental fund revenues, we have SLOSS 18 forecasted revenues of $84,700 or 15%. Center Park Special Revenue of $5,000 or less than 1%. Our LME grant of $87,000 or 2%. Our chip grant of $200,000 or 4%. And of the enterprise fund revenues of $454,893. Water and sewer makes up $2,516,473 or 49% of that amount. Stormwater is $252,852. And sanitation is $1281,568. Next, we'll look at our total budgeted city expenditures and expenses by fund. The general fund total expenditures is $5545,169. Confiscated asset fund is $1,000. Center Park Special Revenue Fund is $5,000. Chip Grant is $200,000. LME Capital Project is $136,990. Our SLOSS 18 Capital Project Fund is $753,563. Water and Sewer Fund is $2,431,925. Stormwater Utilities, $514,869. Sanitation Fund is $903,678. Total, uh, forecasted expenditures and expenses for the fiscal year 2022 budget is $10,492,194. This proposed fiscal year 2022 budget of $10,492,194 is $5,395,581 or 33.96% less than the amended fiscal year 2021 budget of $15,887,75. This decrease is due to the completion of our construction of Center Park and construction of the new water inspection. So, we have a lot of capital expenditures in fiscal year 2021, about close to four and a half. Uh, this is just, uh, again restating what the expenditures are, but it's in high chart, it kind of gives us percentages. The general fund is 52.85% of the total $10 million budget. Confiscated funds is less than 1%. Center Park is, special revenues, less than 1%. Our SLOSS 18 Fund is 7.18%. The LME Fund is 1.31%. Our chip grant fund is 1.91%. Water and Sewer is 23.28%. Stormwater is 4.91%. And sanitation fund is 8.61% of our total city budget. Next, we'll just kind of dive a little bit deeper into the general fund expenditures by department. Like I said, the general fund is the chief operating fund of the city. The legislative budget is $124,501. The elections budget is $15,256. Financial administration is $475,133. Legal is $203,959. Information systems is $80,452. Municipal Court is $173,801. Police Department is $21,017,89. Probation Office is $69,978. Fire Department is $11,441,11. Animal Control is $97,212. Street Department is $504,659. Park, uh, this is maintenance, the parks, $81,000. Building Inspection, $57,38. Marketing and Economic Development is $200,980. The total general fund expenditures are $5545,169. And we do have 14 departments in the general fund. Uh, again, this is just another look at the general fund expenditures, but now we're gonna look at the breakdown by function. Our Public Safety is 65% of the total general fund budget. Public Safety includes our police services, our fire services, our probation, and our animal control. Our Public Works is 9% of the total general fund budget. Parks and Recreation is 2%. Housing Development is 5%, and that is our building inspection and economic development. Our General Government is 16%, and our Judicial is 3%. One more look at the general fund expenditures, and now we're gonna look based on operating and capital expenditures. The salaries and wages of the general fund across all departments is $2,774,452 or 50% of the total budget. Employee benefits are $971,700 or 17% of the total budget. Professional and technical services is 2%. Coaches' property services is 5%. Other purchase services is 8%. Supplies and utilities is 9%. Capital at lay is 6%, and intergovernmental is 3% of the total general fund budget. Okay, now we'll switch to the enterprise fund expenses and we'll look at the enterprise fund by operating and capital. Uh, the enterprise fund expenses are $3,850,472, of which $3,269,972 is operating and $580,500 is capital expenditures, capital expenses. Salaries and wages is $733,862 or 19% of the enterprise fund budget. Employee benefits is $297,822 or 8% of the enterprise fund budget. Professional Services is $83,000 or 2%. Purchased Property Services is $133,500 or 27%. Other Purchase Services is $163,210 or 4%. Supplies is $357,100 or 9%. Capital Purchases is $580,500. Water Treatment and Intergovernmental is $601,478 or 16% of the enterprise fund budget. Last slide, this is just the budget summary. So, the proposed fiscal year forecast of 2022 budgeted revenues is $9542,760 across all funds. Other financing sources that will be used to balance the budget, we're gonna appropriate general fund fund balance of $195,000 or appropriate some special revenue fund balance of $1,000. Appropriate enterprise net position of $804,581. That will give us total proposed revenues and other financing sources of $10,543,343. Our proposed fiscal year 2022 budget expenditures, uh, general fund is $5545,169. Special Revenue Capital Project Expenditures is $10,096,533. Enterprise Fund Expenses is $3,850,472. Total Proposed Budget Expenditures, expenses is $10,492,194. The excess of revenue over the expenditures is $51,147. That is gonna be an increase in our SLOSS 18 fund balance just because our projected SLOSS projects for fiscal year 2022 will be that much less than the forecasted revenues for 2022. And that completes that presentation.
The tough budget.
The only thing I'm very disappointed in and nothing we can do about it though at this moment is we need at least three more policemen, we need two more firemen full-time.
So, why the public works?
Yeah, and then public works need at least two or three people additional. So, not sure what we'll do at this point, but we figure out something, we get some great people working for the city. I mean, some really great people, and that's the only reason the city can keep doing great jobs. What do we got next, uh? All right. At this point, I'm gonna close the council meeting and enter into a public hearing on the budget. Is anybody who wishes to make any comments about the budget? Okay. I don't hear anything, see anything? We monitoring the Facebook, uh, to see if there's anything coming in? Got it, okay. Not a problem, I'm sure we'll get it later, so we'll take care of it later. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing and put us back in the regular council session. Anybody else want to make any further comments about the budget? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Harrison. Very, very, very well done, and I gave everybody a lot of information on what's going on and show how we're really trying to work with the city's budgeting.
You're welcome, Mayor. We did, we did budget for additional position in the street and two additional positions in water and sewer.
Right, right. But even those, I don't think, I don't think that's enough though, I mean, but it's a, it's a start.
Yeah, and the thing is, is that, you know, it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna play important in raising the numbers and trying to, you know, provide the service that we need to provide, uh, but...
That's right. Appreciate it, two councilmen, Councilman O'Neal and Councilman Wright, for all their time that we spent there working with Mr. Harrison and all of the partner heads. Because the partner head are very, very important to us too. Okay, we go on to item number five, which is approval, renewal, merchant aid, application reduction, and banking credit card fees. Councilman Evans and City Councilman Harrison, please.
So, I'm gonna ask the City Attorney to go ahead and give us the details on this. I suspect we're gonna be talking about credit card fees and all that kinds of stuff, so...
Thank you, Councilman Evans.
I know that, that the city has been absorbing for a long time, a lot of the fees that we pay for, for being able to accept credit cards and things. And to get to the point where we're gonna be asking folks that use those services to help us pay for grants.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Evans. Will you kind of talk a little bit at the prior meeting just about the cost of the credit card fees that the city has been absorbing? But we also kind of, this agreement here is kind of looking at it from the other direction of the fees that we are paying. And this agreement will help redo those, reduce those fees slightly. It's not a huge amount, but it should save the city about $5,000 annually of what we've been paying. So, that, that's a little bit of a help there. Basically, it's, this merchant application is to renew the services that we already have with merchant aid for two online merchant accounts. And it's going to, the agreement reflects a reduction in the discount rate and the check card rate from .39% to .29%. And also a reduction in those transactions from 12 cents to seven cents per transaction. We'll also experience a reduction in our backed settlement fees from 19 cents to 15 cents. So, again, it's not a huge amount, but it is about $5,000 annually that will be saved until, you know, we have an opportunity to rethink the other topic we talked about at the prior council meeting. So, this is just kind of something to help us right now before we do any other changes. So, I'm just asking that Mayor and Council approve this agreement with merchant aid so we can receive these reductions in fees.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this merchant application with merchant aids to authorize the signing.
I second that motion.
Motion in a second, okay. Even before I do this, Mr. Harrison, thank you so much for finding us out, we could do this. And that helps, helps our citizens immensely.
You're welcome. I was hoping it was a little bit hard, but you know, we'll take everything we can save.
That's right, that's $5,000, I mean, that's, uh, yeah, that's almost 10%.
That's, that's right, that's right.
When I remember looking for what the costs were, I think so.
Right.
Okay, call for a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hear none? We will sign all this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on ahead to item number six, which is the former and pro temp municipal court judge Carl Valene and myself and the city attorney, I, I just wanna have it. Carl Valene will be our third judge, municipal court judge, third in line if, if we need him, necessary. So, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this there, but I want to let Mr. Tine tell us about it.
Mayor, we currently have, it's our chief judge is Jeff Rube in the municipal court. We have a pro, first pro temp judge is Attorney Sherri Campbell that we appointed earlier this year. Attorney Carl Valene, local attorney, has served as pro temp judge for us in the past. He recently completed some training that would enable us to go ahead and appoint him again. Um, he is required to get annual judges training, which he'll do at his expense, and as you said, he wouldn't sit on the bench if neither of the other two judges were available. So, at this point, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to appoint Carl Valine, an additional municipal court pro temp judge.
So, move.
Have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any comments or questions? Here or none? Call for a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? If it passes, thank you very much. Mr. Valine is now our, our, our new judge. Okay. Um, number seven is the MacEver Work Detail Contract, Councilman Wright, and Director of Operations Brumfield, I'm with Cook, Operation Brumfield Taking Direct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you need any back, you should have a copy of the MacEver Work Detail, what this is, uh, probation, where's that come out and it worked for us throughout the summer and, and winter on the, on the streets. Uh, the contract is pretty much the same as it always is. Our city attorney, Ms. Tynes, has gone over the contract and approved it. Uh, the only change is there is an increase in costs this year. We've gone from thirty-nine thousand dollars to forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, ten thousand dollar increase. That seems like a lot, but they haven't had, they haven't increased on us in several years and we're talking about eight employees, basically, for forty-nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. So, it, I mean, it's, it's still a no-brainer for, for, for me, that, uh, this, this cost is well worth what we need and we, we, we went through the year without them last year due to COVID and, uh, we, we really don't wanna do that again. They, they've been a real asset to us and we really, we, we really need them again, so we're here tonight to ask that the mayor be allowed to sign this contract and, uh, forty-nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars for, for the year for one twenty-two.
Okay, I'm gonna take a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we go ahead and enter into this agreement and authorize you to sign it.
I have a second, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? Uh, I remember, I get, I think it's been ten years since it had an increase.
Uh, it's been several years, I don't know exactly, yes, sir.
I can't, I'm trying to remember the last one. I've got there twelve years and, um, might have been twelve years.
Yeah, I missed it up in the making.
I, that really matters, I just, I mean, I understand the need for.
It's, it's, it's well worth it, man.
We sure missed him.
Yes, sir, I believe.
During this pandemic, we really missed him.
That, that was my comment, Mr. Mayor, is that it, it, it's, it's a good opportunity for us and to, to help keep the city clean.
Yes, sir.
On which you do notice the difference.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'm glad to have the DPO back and definitely willing to enter into this agreement at that price.
Call for a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Here or none? If it passes, thank you very much, Mr. Brumfield, and, and thank them too for us when you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Recommendation, planning and zoning board and, and public hearing, uh, rezoning Oakmont Six Nine Acres, Woodhaven Road, R two to M one. Director of Operations Brumfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we did have an application come in from, uh, Wyler and Associates for nine fifty-three car with Parkway, wishing to rezone from, like, like you said, R two to M one. Uh, we did hold our planning and zoning meeting this past Thursday night. Uh, there were no opponents to the change. Mr. Wyler is here and would be glad to ask, answer any questions you may have, but, uh, planning and zoning did recommend unanimously to approve the rezon if, if council chooses.
Well, we're going to public hearing at this time?
Yeah.
And public, council meeting. Now, public hearings, anybody with any comments out there? Okay, you gonna take any comments? I don't hear any, I didn't hear anything from anybody. It's a very small piece of land, I know that.
Yes, it's, it's basically just a small addition to the existing school buildings that are on site.
Basically makes it rectangle, I think.
Yes, sir.
In the end of, okay, out of public session, back to, yeah, back to, uh, council meeting. Anybody have any questions, Mr. White?
Mr. White, you want to say anything or?
Um, I'll answer any questions. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to, um, bring this before you. Um, as you mentioned, it just squares up the property, gives us an opportunity to correct the irregular shape of the land and maybe add another building or two, uh, in the future.
Good. Sounds good to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Business owner. Okay. At this point, I'm taking a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, decision made by the, uh, planning and zoning board in the public hearing. Uh, May twenty-seventh of this year.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to rezone zero point six nine acres of Woodhaven Road, R two to M one. I, I have a motion, I have a second, any further comments?
Just correction on that motion, there's not Woodhaven Road, it's nine fifty-three car with Parkway, is the, is the legal address of the park.
Okay.
The sign is on Woodhaven Road, the road, it fronts on Woodhaven Road, the, the property that will be expanded is nine fifty-three car with.
Yes, sir.
Excellent, thank you for telling that.
It is.
Okay. Call for a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Here or none? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. White, any?
Very much.
Okay. Next item on here is, uh, approval of activation of K nine storm owned by Michael Nelson and the K nine unit to, to Centerville Police Department. Councilman Evans and Chief Duncan, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna let Chief Duncan go ahead and give us some details on this one. There's been a lot of discussion and, uh, so, go ahead, Chief.
Mayor, Council, uh, as we know that Officer Volotan Solz, uh, another police department, was in Cleveland, allowing him to, uh, to take his officer to the prison. We have a boy in our K nine program, uh, the boy now can be filled by a K nine that's been trained through the state of Georgia that is certified to be a police K nine, um, dog, the dog has been personally owned and trained by Officer Nelson. Officer Nelson is willing to come into contact with the city of Centerville for the use of his, uh, K nine at the, at his expense. The, uh, city, but now just, I was in the agreement for, uh, to activate him as a K nine unit within the city police department.
Okay, and Dan Motion?
So, um, Mr. Mayor, I move that we agree that we, uh, approve this, uh, agreement to bring on K nine storm.
That I be authorized to sign it?
And that you be authorized to sign it.
All right, thank you. Have a motion, have a second?
A second.
Actually, I'm looking forward to this, I really am, and, uh, and, uh, thank you, officer.
I do have a question, I do have, I do have a question. So, the dog is a drug dog or?
Narcotics, narcotics and tracking both, right?
Yes, he's narcotics and he's a truck.
Right.
Probably could've used, uh, a couple days ago, couldn't we?
Yes, sir.
Good location, don't wanna get away from us.
We'll catch you, officer.
I know, I know you will, okay. Uh, have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? K nine is now, K nine, K nine in the storm is now a member of the Centerville Police Department, it's a full-time officer. All right. All right, and next we got item number ten, which is approval of purchase sixteen E citation presence to install E patrol unit. Councilman Evans, you have that one, please.
Yes, sir. Chief, uh, Duncan and I have talked about this and this is gonna be a great help, um, not only in the police department, but in the court. And it's going to, uh, make things more efficient, so, go right ahead, Chief.
Um, I'm not around with the, um, agency, I was, I was looking over the process for where we do court. And one of the processes is that the officer gets a citation from, he writes a citation on the side of the roadway and then he turns that hand copy in. Uh, in today's society, we are using more electronics, which allows the officer to be away from its, right side of the roadway, in the court, after writing a citation. If the officer does a search through DCIC for the driver he had stopped beside the roadway, that information will be automatically uploaded to a citation. We only press a button and press R two citation, one for the defendant, one for the courts. This will make it more efficient for the officer plus the court system because it will allow the information to transfer, go over to the courts, uh, electronically, and will keep Miss Harrison and a new, uh, register we have in SLOs, having to manually put it in every morning that the citation's come in. Uh, it allows two of them for more accuracy because some office handwriting is not the best, but it allows, uh, uh, it to transfer over. And the citation, uh, the funds that were used to be in this twenty twenty-one budget, um, I was searching for some money that, when we were talking about business, I found that the, the principal costs is around ten thousand dollars and I do have that amount left within my, this year's budget to purchase, to make a progress. I also spoke with vendors, one of the vendors had asked him whether the items be available before the end of the year. And he stated that, yes, if, uh, we want to purchase, they will be available.
And so, Chief, um, I noticed you have three quotes here.
Yes, sir. Um, made a contact with Pro, Prologistics for a quote, for a four millimeter printer, a printer would, would mainly sit in between the control seats. It would, it'd be, uh, allowed, uh, be secured to the barrier in between. Only thing that officer would do is plug it in and once to his citation, to his, uh, computer and a power source, and once he gets printed, print, printer would choose out two, two citations. That's the four inch one and the, uh, other two will be for the four sheet ones, which are, uh, they'll be mounted at different locations. But the main thing about this is the four inch one price tag is a whole lot lower than the other computers that are priced out. Um, I priced it with Prologistics for ninety-eight hundred dollars. I actually went to a exact company that Prologistics was selling, where if you bought from the company, it was gonna be probably about fifteen thousand dollars.
Really?
So, and I went to another company, uh, and said, there should be really ten thousand four hundred dollars, so, the Prologistics quote came in cheaper than the other two vendors.
So, that's the vendor that you wanna go with?
Yes, sir.
Very good. And thanks for finding money and issue as much as possible. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, go ahead and allow the police department to, uh, purchase these printers from Prologistics.
I second his motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, and, and I think it's a great idea, we're gonna do. Call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? You got them?
Yes, sir.
I have, I have some conversation.
All right, go ahead.
So, I know that normally when I get a, a, uh, citation from the law enforcement officers, you can't read them, you need to read it. So, this will be, yeah, this will be eligible, right, I mean, prints out, it's like, you know, a personal head, like, you know, that's good. It makes it. I'm just saying. But it's a, it's a good thing.
We didn't hear anything, we don't know anything.
I was just saying, it's a good thing, it's a good thing. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate all your work.
All right, I'm with the council, next. Oh, yeah, before we do that, I wanna say this again right now, I'll wait, I'll wait. Uh, post four, please, post three, post three. You want to? No, we have post three.
So, um, thanks everybody for being here again tonight. Appreciate all your, your efforts and your hard work and take care of our citizens. Uh, and for those who are, who are here to provide us information also, we appreciate you, uh, being here tonight. And thank you for the good coverage and the newspaper also, appreciate that. And so, just, uh, I, I'm enjoying living in Centerville and the things that are going on, I'm excited about it. People are all over the place now, people are getting back out, they're getting good use of the park. Uh, I've talked to several people who don't even live in Centerville, say, hey, man, you guys got the right ideas, go with their words, you know, so. But none of that happens without our, our employees and, uh, we really appreciate you and all that you do.
Thank you, post four, please.
Hey, um, I'd like to send a shout-out to Councilman Wright, thank him certainly for working with me on the, uh, budget committee. Uh, it was three grueling days. Carol doesn't give you any slack.
Yes.
We did get a bottle of water, which is nice, no breaks. She has a, a formal schedule, she has a formal schedule we have to stay to, and she doesn't have a problem calling you, remind you, whatever schedule is, so. So, that's really good. Carol, you're a phenomenal, uh, accountant, I tell you, you're great. And walk us through all that. Um, the department heads certainly, as they do, they work very hard all year long, and when it comes time for their budget, it's, it's a serious discussion and they do a great job of it. And, uh, especially wanted to recognize Chief Duncan. Uh, he sort of jumped in right, right there at the, uh, beginning, having to go into a, uh, budget committee meeting and, and the family, what, you know, just day one, I think, or day two, something like that. In there doing business and doing his thing, did a great job, thank you. I wanted to also, um, thank Mr. Brumfield for all the work that he's doing with the detail, uh, trying to help us keep our cities straight and doing all the things that he knows we need to, we need to do. And I know all that stuff, all that extra stuff that they do is not extra, it's hard work that they have to follow up on, make sure the contracts are right, working with our city attorney and, and, and the, and all the moving parts in the city. I mean, you don't really know what it's like running a city till you get in the city and then you start seeing all the pieces move and you know that each person that's sitting in here has something to do with whatever we produce at the end. And so, uh, but I certainly appreciate all your hard work, sir. Um, public hearing, I gotta tell you, um, and I know that, that the minutes go out and I know this notice is placed, uh, in the newspaper, on Facebook. Uh, and the public hearings, when we do public hearings, it's important for the public to try to attend and, uh, and this is your opportunity to wash your paint. Uh, tonight, we had one person here who was public, who is a public person outside of employees. It would've been nice to, if, if there's public, there's a lot of you that have concerns, bring, come, you can come back now. The city's open for, uh, business, our meetings are open again, please come back so that way, 'cause your opinions matter to us and they're valuable to us. And we, and we really would like to see more faces here with us as we conduct our meetings. And, and one last thing, uh, the park, as Councilman, uh, Evans has pointed out, is great and a lot of people are enjoying it, but please, uh, do not leave any accompanying, unaccompanied children at the park because it's important that we all know that, that we have to sort of take care of our own community and so forth. So, it's good to have, you know, everyone there along with their adult supervision, so. That's all I have to say and have a great day. I drove by the park, that place is packed.
Yeah.
In fact, I was gonna go jump over there for a little bit, but then come over here, so. Yeah, that was it, that's all I have, man.
You got something else?
Yeah, one, one additional thing, um, you know, so, uh, speaking about the park, uh, this Friday, June fourth, Food Truck Friday. Come on out and, uh, enjoy some time at the park, get yourself something to eat and, uh, enjoy those things that are being provided for you. And also, on, uh, Saturday, um, nine AM, Centerville Market Day, so we're gonna be having the farmer's market, so come on out and, uh, see some of the things that are available in that sense.
Thank you. I love that, too, that farmer's market, my wife loves that, she comes back with a stack of stuff. And I said, who's gonna eat all that? And she says, me. I said, okay. So, she loves, she loves going over there, she and her girlfriends have a great time buying stuff over there, bringing it back. Uh, probably the most important thing I wanna talk about tonight is that, you know, we're in early voting, we started last month, we go through the end of next week, three weeks of early voting. Yeah? We had a hundred and thirty-three people vote for the park. I voted today, I was number one twenty-two, there was eleven people after me, and I was around thirteen, I was there. I wasn't gonna wait till that date, but I've got other things coming up too, I'm afraid I might get slowed down, I'm gonna make sure I got my vote in there. Voting is important. You have early voting through, uh, Friday of next week. And the following Tuesday is actually, uh, the day, uh, the final day you can vote. And the following Tuesday is actually the day of finally you can vote, that'll be here. And I look forward to seeing a lot of people here, I really do. I want everybody to think about it. And I, I appreciate everybody out there. We've had, we've come out of this pandemic, doing really well. City of Centerville did very well through the whole thing, it's because of the citizens. We up here, all we can do is just, is just try to help as much as we can. But the citizens took it serious and because they took it serious, we did well through the thing. Even losing one person, though, was too much. And we lost more than one, but around, in several other areas around us, we did well. And I want to thank the citizens for that. And I don't have anything else. Everybody have a great evening, thank you so much for coming.